Would you like to proceed, Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is a meeting of the Borough of Highlands Highlands Council, special meeting Monday, December 6th, 2021, 6:00 p.m. The special meeting of the Highlands Council of the Borough of Highlands is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Law, notice has been transmitted to the Asbury Park Press, Two River Times, and by posting at the Borough of Highlands Municipal Building and filing with the Borough Park all on November 30th, 2021. This agenda is complete to the extent known, no formal action will be taken at this meeting. Council may limit repetitive comments and may limit the time or number of questions or comments from any one citizen to ensure an orderly meeting and allow adequate time for members of the public to be heard. Please stand for the pledge. I will now call the role, Council Leader Martin. Council Leader Matola. Absent. Council Leader Roney.
Here.
Council President Oshavsky.
Here.
Mayor Duneau.
Here.
Thank you. On tonight's agenda, we have the discussion items, skate park design, feedback session.
Good evening, we're happy to see you here tonight to help shape the design of the skate park. We will only be taking input and questions regarding the design of the skate park at this meeting. And with that said, I would like to introduce Jason, if you'd like to go to the microphone over there.
All right, just hang on, perfect. Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. This, uh, this project's been a long, long time coming. So, little, little quick background on myself and Spaw Ranch before we launch or anything, but, so I grew up in Red Bank, Midtown area. I think I'm 39, and the very first skate park that I ever stepped foot in was this park here that's in Highlands, to give everyone kind of a scale of how old and how long it's been here. So, to be able to come back and, and work on a project like this is, is, you know, really feel like, I'm only 39, but things are kind of coming full, full circle for me. You know, anyone who's ever been out to that park knows that when it was done at the time, that, that's what skate parks were, that's what skateboarding was. It was still something that was really getting defined in the public eye. And now you have, we're, we're in a day and age where it was in the Olympics and, and you have people making solid livings off of this. It's not just kind of that, that random sport that, you know, outcasts were doing, right? It's, it's mainstream, it's everywhere. So, the fact that Highlands is able to go out and, and get the grant that they did to fund this project is, in my opinion, amazing. A lot of projects I work on, you have a lot of groups of kids that come together, go to the city meetings, ask for the park, and the city will, will often sometimes give them land, but they're not going to give them a budget. You guys are very fortunate in that you got land and a budget here. So, I think that we have a really unique situation, and we have a great site that we're working with, we have a solid budget that we're working with, and we have a town that's, that's obviously very supportive of the project. You know, even though I grew up here and I'm, I'm back quite often, the whole goal that I have behind this, behind this, this project is to design what you guys want. I, I know what I like to skate, but by this year, I probably want to throw more of my weight around in that conversation, but at the end of the day, it's, it's just to hear what you guys want to skate and put a design together that reflects that. I had a few people, there was a, a concept design that was initially put out that, that they, that the city used to help get the funding for this project. That design was completely just a place card holder, it was just something to get us to this meeting so that we can have funding to have this meeting, get this park done. So, any, any ideas about if you love the design, awesome, if you hated it, don't worry about it, we're not here to build that design if no one wants it. So, I guess I'm going to kind of start by just asking, you know, we don't, going through, like, what is everyone exactly looking to skate here? Is it, is it more in the direction of street, is it more in the direction of transition? What parks around here locally do you skate, do you like, that you want, you'd like to see features in? So, just start kind of rapid firing whatever, whatever ideas you have as far as the design goes. Bowls?
I've skated at Long Branches because it's sheer across the years, right? That's like, I've been to one, it's, they have the violence.
Yeah.
So, I just want to, I can see, like you said earlier, I can see what they had when they initially did it. That's at the point.
Yeah.
I've maybe been in the area two years, so I've been using the area, I guess. So, I'd like to see, I guess something that's going to allow kids to grow into, learn and progress on, and it's not going to put them off by being too big.
Yeah.
But something that'll have a nice highlight issue of, I guess, a little bit of street streak, would be personally, I'd like to see, I guess, more bowls and possibly a good bit of those stuff, just so they can progress to that, have that.
Yes. So, one of the things to keep in mind, too, is the way that, the way that, not every, you know, study in Jersey works, but the way that it works here is the insurance, you, you know, the insurer who insures the park, they have a set of rules and regulations that we, when we design, we need to adhere to from a design perspective, the city also needs to adhere to from a, we got a two mark, I mean, need to adhere to from like a legislative administrative perspective, right? So, a couple of the, I, just because we have to take, the clerk has to take notes, if you start, please state your name and address for the record.
Nathaniel Burel, 45, Paddy Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, as I was saying, JIF, it's JIF, it's called the Joint Insurance Fund, they have a few rules. The first rule that, it's going to, only a couple really impact what we want to do in design wise, but the first is, we have to create a perimeter around the entire skate park. It's got to be at least five feet with no skateable features in within that five feet on all four sides. So, that kind of takes your sight and shrinks it down, and shrinks it down a little bit. And then from like an elevation perspective, you can only go up six feet. You can only have, and you can only go down six feet. So, if you, yeah, so six foot is going to essentially be where our maximum, any sort of elevation change that we have, even, and when I, just to make sure I'm not complicating it, I'd say up and down six feet, even if we go up, up a couple feet, like three feet, we can only go down three feet. So, it'll only be a, a max of a six foot elevation change. And that's nothing that I, you, or the city can get around, that's if we want to get the park built, it's got to, it's got to, in order to be insured. Yeah, so that's just like a couple, kind of a couple of things to keep in mind. Bowls, transition, I think that's, I think it's a great option, you know, for the town. You look at Long Branch, we have obviously a big plaza, we got two bowls there, Keyport is more, more of a plaza, the Atlantic Park, call it what you want. It's, you know, it's a slightly newer version of, of what we're replacing here essentially, but it's, and I think that's up on the, on the topic for kind of getting, getting replaced a bit as well. Our goal when we go into this will be, you know, the idea is it's all wheels, all abilities. So, you know, we want to be, we don't want to design something that's going to, you know, someone who's just coming out there for the first time is going to be petrified of. The whole idea is you can grow, you can grow with the park, and that's everything that we're going to, that we're going to try and figure. So, even though six foot's our max, we're not going to wall this whole thing out six feet around, right? We're going to have a lot of different elevations, a lot of different. Yeah, exactly, a lot of different options, with like, you know, everything from transition to bench to low ones, like, we want the park to be user friendly, instead of something that anyone and everyone can be, be used. Any other general, just general thoughts?
A long, round.
What was it?
Tomstein, Five Prospect Streets. Yeah, a long, like chin height circle flatiron, like round flatiron, you know what I'm saying? Well, maybe, okay. And, and like a nice long Slappy Herb somewhere in the park of the city state, too. Yeah.
Just by your show of hands, what are people leaning towards, like, who's more street and who's more transition, if you're street, put your hand up, just so I can get an idea. All right, so two, most seen, most in transition, three, four, five, okay. So, probably like a 50/50 split was kind of like what we'd be looking at in this. You look at the way skate parks have gone, for the longest time, it's always kind of been like a feature of that, and like, all transition or all street. So, the whole idea is just to develop, you know, deliver something here that's, that's going to be well rounded and can check everyone's boxes.
I also have like a, a general question about your skate park design, you tend not to deck your quarter pipes. I'm just curious, if we build a quarter pipe here, it would be fantastic to have a deck areas, that don't feel like I'm going to fall flat if I put my foot down on them, like in.
Yeah, we have, we do a lot of cantilevered, a lot of times that becomes, and space becomes an issue, and we don't have the space to be able to fill that deck back. So, for instance, like we have the, do we have the JIF regulation, right? That's five feet, can't even have a deck in it. So, if we get to a park where we need that, we need that, that spacing between, let's say, the toe of the ramp and an A-frame or a fun box, we'd rather give that than take four feet away from there and have to be too fast. But I, I hear you, the performance texture, they work, but yeah, you'd, you'd much rather have a full deck.
Christian Richards, 52, Asbury Ave. in Atlantic Highlands. Personally, I, I like the concept design, for the most part, a lot. I think the, the closest, like, for lack of a better word, good skate park near this is Long, is Long Branch. Long Branch has two bowls. Both of them are, I'd say probably like more on the advanced side, you see little kids, you know, go in and, and kind of mess around, but it's hard, I think, in general for beginners to go in bowls, it's because it's kind of a one, one at a time kind of thing, and, and younger kids are intimidated to go in and, and stuff like that. So, I like how the design has a lot of transition that would kind of like help people learn, but doesn't like trap you in, in that way. And it also, you know, the design kind of does involve a little bit of transition and street, so, um, yeah, that's kind of my feedback.
Yeah, I think one of the, well, you bring up a good point of like the idea of, of designing something that's going to be bowl-ish and skateable, like a bowl without feeling like completely imposed in. One of the biggest issues that we can't get around is the water table, it's obviously very shallow here, right? So, the ability to go in ground is going to be very, very slight. I mean, even, even the Long Branch bowl, if you're able to get that in ground a little bit, we also have to build up in order to even go down with it. So, I think anything bowl-wise, I mean, I think there is an opportunity to potentially go in ground and have something, but have it still be open and flowy, where you can kind of transfer in, transfer out without, without sort of too many issues. But I like the idea of having like just one big open park that you can kind of flow around, you'll have your street features if you want them, but you can still flow the whole thing and really still have it feel kind of like a bowl. So, I think that, I like that idea, and I think that'll help with, the, the water table, aside from what you guys might not realize, is aside from the fact that the water's there, and you're thinking, all right, well, we can't go down, the alternative is to go up. Now, as we go up, we go wider, as we go wider, we lose a lot of our, we lose a lot of our rhythm stages. Right now, the site is currently 120 feet long and 55 feet wide. And then the one thing I did want to ask you actually is, we have between where the skate park slab ends now and the basketball court, there's a strip of grass. Is that, do we need that grass, or are we trying to pave that as well?
Isn't that five feet part of your, uh, five foot section?
Part of it will be, it's about 12, I measured 12, it's like 12 feet by 55, so there's like the adylated two, or there's like seven feet of it. But I, so I just didn't know if that was on the table or not.
I was going to say, everything's on the table, and so if something is, is final and complete, but if you need that strip in order to make a better park, it's uncertain that the rest of the council will definitely entertain that.
Okay, cool, and that's, yeah, we can keep that conversation on, I just, I noted, I noted it before I got here, that I wanted to ask about that.
So, you see, seven by?
It's about 12 by 55.
12 by 55.
Yeah, and that's like measuring off Google Earth, so it could be plus or, plus or minus in any one direction.
On the platform area around the park, is that an opportunity to? My name's Michael Dorit, P07 Park Company in Atlantic Highlands, New Jersey. Is that an opportunity to mound the earth? Because it has, it has to be flat, right? Do you actually use that to burn to create a bowl?
Yeah, just as long as it's not a, just as long as it's not a skateable feature. So, we could have literally like the, we have, let's say we have a, a full quarter pipe, we have a piece of coke in here, and they got four foot deck that go back, that deck could be right where the five foot marker is, and we could really steep probably two home burrs.
That's great, because I'm going to give you maximum space. One, one comment on transition, old school San Diego pool skater, so that, that's my point of view, but to me, there's a huge difference with transitions and being able to carve on a corner, carve a turn. There's a huge surf culture here, it's obviously where we are, you grew up here, you understand that. I see a lot of the guys at Southern Presidents' Parks, like basically surf skating around that, around that, both kids and older guys. So, I think it's, it would be a great opportunity to implement some kind of bowl, either designated or something where it gives an opportunity for kids to learn to carve around a corner, turn a corner, grind through a corner, that's a totally different wonderful feeling than any straight transition, my honest, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
Anyone else?
Hey, my name's Ashley Cruz, 124 Wesley in Atlantic Highlands. Hey, I am a all-inclusive architect and also a shotcrete monarchist. I'm not a skater, I'm tall, but I respect you all and like you very much. So, I have a question about that five foot JIF zone, also, does that need to be completely like void of anything, like can you still make it like a, a space for people to be in?
Yeah, so what's funny, what's ironic about that is they won't let you put any, any skate features in there, but you could put, you could put crushed stone if you want, I just, you should never put air skate park, right?
Right, that's a panty skate.
Yeah, you can put grass, you can put dirt, you can put asphalt, you can carve, it'd be, it's just as long as it doesn't have a skate, it's not a skateable feature.
So, would a, a bench not hold that? Is that really a skate feature?
Probably, I mean. So, Southern Presidents' actually isn't just, yeah, Southern Presidents' is, is kind of the anomaly. You could probably try and put a bench there, but it would probably get, yeah, I mean, it would get skated really quickly.
Cool, and so, I, I saw online, you know, the plans for all the skate features of the skate park, but where does the park sit within the site? I know, yeah, there's some existing other things like basketball, is that going to be staying there, or are you also modifying that as well?
They're getting new, a sport court, a basketball court, and four tennis courts, same thing, that would, cool. And playground equipment, so you don't need to break. So, the whole park's getting through that. I think you, you came in like a second before I said it, or after I said it, but that concept design was strictly just to help us get to this point, so that design is, if everyone loves it, great, but if not, we're completely okay, we're starting from scratch, but right now, the idea is, is you put the skate park where the skate park currently is.
Right, and you're just working on the features of that.
Yeah.
Cool.
And everything's going to be on concrete.
Yeah.
Tomstein, Five Prospect, with the idea in mind that we could scrap that design, are there other designs that we could see? Is there going to be a couple of designs put forth for the town to vote on, or how does that work? Because you say we can alter it, but it's kind, so you're going to take this back and feed this back and come up with a new design, or how do you, how do we judge if not, if we're going to change it?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, great, great question. So, at the end, I was going to kind of wrap up with how we're doing this. So, what we want to do is, by the time we leave tonight, I'll have, I'll give everyone's email address, we'll create the design, and then we're going to host a design webinar, where we present the design, on like a Zoom or, or go to the meeting, some sort of platform like that, and give you guys a chance to be able to sound off on it, because no one ever gets anything right the first time, and if I told you I was going to take all this information and go back and bang out the most perfect design you've all ever seen, you'd just tell me I'm crazy. You know, I fully, we, we have to extend doing this, we know that it's skateboarding and skateparking, what people like is all really subjective. Our goal is to, to put together what the best design is based on the overall group that we're working with and the feedback and inspiration that we have. So, when we do have that webinar, please don't feel shy, tell me if you think something's not good, something needs to get reworked, but at the end of the day, this is your guy's skate park, and that's what we're designing for.
And you don't have an open link for that, so that folks that couldn't make it here?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, anyone here who has that link will email it out, feel free to spread it around, the more, the more the merrier.
And I tend to agree with the question, if the design is put forth, it's pretty accessible and built pretty hard, actually, yes. To give options, like 20 minutes away.
I did have one, like, a kind of specific thought. Yeah, so, I did have one kind of specific thought based off the concept design. If you were to use a feature like the H that you have on there, I think, you know, it's a really cool kind of like aesthetic piece for the park, for the town. My only comment on that was like, so the, the middle of the H is like hollowed out.
Yeah.
So, my thought was like, maybe just do the same thing, but like with colored, colored concrete, you know, create the H, but like, in the middle, definitely have it like filled in, just so I could see that becoming pretty sketchy.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, so one of the things, and just to kind of keep thinking about as we're going through this, one of the things we try to do in a lot of our parks is like, if the, if the budget's there, the willingness is there, just trying to figure out a tie in the local culture. I mean, Highlands is, there's so much culture here, right? I think there's probably some really cool things, and we need, whether it be the material or, or something. We did, we did this one park in Minnesota, and they have like, it was like the world's largest gathering of stagecoaches, which I didn't even know that was still a thing. But like, we, we literally at the top of the bank, we sunk in a, we sunk in a stagecoach, we don't access to step up or you're a cap. So, we can take things like that, and you know, obviously we have the, the waters right here, so I think that obviously is something notable. But if there's like, if there's ideas anyone has, like, we're, I'm all ears for finding ways to kind of tie in local culture to it.
Jack McMan, buried by Ocean Avenue, Atlantic Highlands. I think that's a good point, I like the H, I think it's like a cool little shout out to Highlands, D and H. But as far as, so you said six feet is the maximum in any terms of inclined?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I like how it's an homage to the Highlands, or, or I think maybe putting that in like a half pipe design, but is that something that you can build the deck out into that five feet if it's not a skateable feature?
Even the deck can't go under the five feet, yeah. It's, yeah, it's, we don't need, essentially just think about it like a five foot sidewalk that wraps the park, that nothing can go with this ice cream, probably the easiest way is just to kind of wrap your head around it. It's a, it's a, I mean, there's been other rules I've fought back on against these guys, against JIF, that like are made zero, it used to be a 15 foot buffer. So, imagine if you had a 100 by 100 area, you're taking 30 feet in both directions right out of the park, and it's like.
You have to make that from the asphalt.
No, and then you still got to put flatwork down there, right? To tie it all together, so now you're, you're spending, you know, maybe like 15, 70 grand just on flatwork to go around the skate park. So, it's, yeah, makes no sense. We've been able to successfully fought back a bunch of a lot of the rules that they put together, thankfully, and kind of gotten to a good spot, we're still working on, I'm still working on a couple other weird kind of rules that they have, but yeah, easiest way to look at it is just a five foot buffer.
And just as another note, like kind of going off the design, throwing it out, like, I like the concept of throwing out the needs with solid concrete, using, like, I know Point Pleasant Park kind of did something with a big quarter wall, where they put, I think you can put some, some in there, so just as like a design now, maybe?
Yeah.
Hey, Mike Cannon, 124, Atlantic Highlands. One question back to the decks, the one thing that works really well at Long Branch, we have, in that far corner, it's over the platform area, where, where people tend to gather. So, it's like, these are the areas where people gather at that park, and it doesn't feel crowded even when it is crowded. So, I'm looking at the, the plan, like this one, looks like there's quarter pipes on either end, and you're likely going to have kids gathering on those ends, and the decks seem a little kind of small, so I just get concerned with like the, the flow, like when you start to get 10 kids, like the Keyport one feels really crowded if there's like five people there, because everybody's gathered on those ends. So, I'd actually have to fix the space soon, but just having to consider like how people gather, and where you're going to have these pockets of kids, like going from, like, you know, the changes with the flow of the park and with the crowd.
Yeah, and I don't know, I, I said it before, I'm not sure where from when you can, but that design is just to get us to this point, so we're, yeah, that's like, yeah, it's whole, that's like, the idea is I'm taking all these ideas here, and I'm going to go back, formulate something, we'll do a webinar, present that then, and then we'll, we'll go from there. But so that design, some people seem to like it, some, I know some people want to see that design, we talked a lot about a bowl, which I wouldn't be able to just pop into there, right? So, yeah, I have a feeling we're going to be looking at something different than what, what's currently been out there, but knowing about the decks.
The other thing, too, with that one, Long Branch, the way it splits off in three directions, right, like changes the flow of the park from just being back and forth?
Yeah.
You can get two people on one at the same time, hit different obstacles, it's not everybody just, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. No, I hear you.
Anyone else?
Nathaniel Burel, 45, Paddy. One of the friends is, what sort of thing are we expecting, what can we expect, I know it's going to take ages just to go back and forth on the design, and do you guys anticipate it being one year, five, four times? When can we skate it, basically?
I mean, I'm thinking realistically, design will be wrapped up before winter ends. Yeah, we'll be 100% through design by the time, by the time winter ends. And then really, it's just, it starts to become a bit of a waiting game on the weather. So, in New Jersey, I mean, dude, it's snowing, it's snowing April here, right? So, but usually, even up to say like end of March, beginning April, when the window kind of starts to open, you're probably, what's up, dude? So, yeah, and you're probably, we're probably looking at like a, a 60 day bill, I would guess, with that like, you know, 60 days, only weekend, probably like two months, two and a half months.
I'd do that.
Yeah, so summertime, you guys should definitely all be trying, for sure.
Hey, Timmy Burns, 28th District, Highlands here. Walked in a little late, so I missed some of the stuff you said, but just to pass through my two cents, design I see now looks sick, super stoked on it, excited for the webinar and move forward with it and stuff, just to kind of touch on maybe what he said a little bit, just like at Long Branch and Keyport and stuff, there's a lot of like north and south skating, like I think he was saying, that's why it tends to seem so crowded, there's not a lot of east and west, and not that necessarily has to have that.
Yeah.
But yeah, just once in a while, you see just a lot of just, you know, north and south type stuff, and not a lot of, you know, east, west type of maneuver, you know what I mean? So, just going off of that, but everyone's stepping pretty excited about it so far, so, yeah.
What about some of the pieces, so I know for, just for standard flat park, was throwing out rounds, is everyone okay with round on the flat park? The first, I mean, the two options are round or square.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be round, because everyone here goes to Long Branch anyway, they might have first against flat park there, and I think your own in the circle would be perfect, pretty, pretty balanced, yeah.
What about for any sort of hand rounds, round, square? I think there's one, there's one, the clause is one round and one square in Long Branch. Pretty sure it's one of those, you want to be round on the hand rounds? I asked this question because 10 years ago, some, some design meeting I was at, a kid showed up and had like a five page paper in why he wrote that every ledge should be 17 inches tall. I swear, it was like the trickiest thing I've ever seen. Are there any specific ledge heights that anyone wants to see?
Variety, for sure, you know, because kids are waiting, they're going to come up, and they're not always going to be there.
Yeah.
You know, you're not going to put it, put it round, you think, every kid.
That's all that's happening. I mentioned Slappy Herb before, is there a preference for a Slappy at the top of the bank, or Slappy on flat? The one, the one Keyport is, is on the top of the bank, yeah, is on the bank, the one in Point Pleasant's on the bank, there's not really many Slappies outside of the ones you just find naturally that are going to be on flat. So, yeah, just.
Like, the one at Keyport is still scary though, because the foot is.
All, all of them, doctor, it's bad, space, yeah, JIF's face, it's, you know.
It's terrible. I don't want to talk, but it's not bad though.
No, it's good.
Anything else, like anything you guys have seen in videos, like, I mean, it's, it's concrete, right? So, if you say, hey, I've always wanted to skate Pier 7, you can put Pier 7, always wanted to skate China Bank, you can put China. Always wanted to skate China Bank, you can put China Bank in. So it's like, what stuff have you guys seen that you just love, would always love to get your hands on, but it's on the other side of the planet?
If we can go, only go six feet, we put in some nice steep channings. So if you're not feeling hurt, you can actually deal with the steep channeys.
Yeah, we can do something, we have like ten foot. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, sorry. Mike, thirty fifth year, Southern Park Avenue? Yeah, it's like just play with the channeys. So kids, you know, can have no channeys to learn things, tighter corners of channeys, but getting more like, uh, you know, not, we're not gonna have a backyard pool here. Let's sit, let's have a more tighter, a little more fun, easy to do. Um, I'm kinda scared, like people say, like, oh, don't get rid of the channel and make it safer, get rid of the, getting in the decks so I can stand. Um, I think one important thing is to realize this is not a big space. We shouldn't be maximizing this for skateboarding, not maximizing it for like standing around and hanging out, which is...
You don't want the park to hang around.
Yeah, you have the problem here, you're just...
Miko DiMartino, uh, Metal Town, thirty seven page ad. I was wondering about, um, like bikes and scooters and skateboards. So how would that, uh, work out?
In terms of design or do they allow?
Uh, both.
Okay.
Design not so much, more...
Well, from, I believe JIP does not allow for bikes. And I don't think scooter, I think scooters are allowed. Um, I think bikes are the only ones that aren't allowed. And that's, that's a JIP thing. Um, we have to double check. I'm pretty sure if bikes aren't allowed, scooters are.
Okay, cause at, uh, the Tom River Park, they allow bikes with plastic heads. That part sounds like, or certain topics just like not understand and then figure it out. So I was wondering about that.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's all a function of the insurance. Um, I don't know if Tom River is JIP or not. We built the park, but we didn't design it. Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if Tom River is. Um, but yeah, I, and I'm almost a hundred percent sure that's no one likes to get on, yes, on scooters.
Uh, Christian Richards, fifty two Asbury, Atlantic Islands. Um, I think kinda going along with what he was saying a little bit, um, like texture is really cool at a park, so you know, maybe some brick texture on a bank. Um, a lot of the newer parks have like the X coping, that's like super fun. Uh, yeah.
I like that, that grinding grind coping?
I really like it.
I actually never seen it.
It grinds exactly the same, but it just like makes a cool sound. So that's really fun. Um, yeah, if, if you were to do like a steeper quarter pipe, um, I think like cool coping is a really good option to like add for that, to get like the complete sort of...
Yeah.
Experience, I guess. Um, and maybe like going along with, um, like some, some people here were talking about like a bowl or like kinda like the feeling of not necessarily hitting a straight quarter pipe. Um, maybe that's a way that you can, depending on how you do the design, uh, make things not so like two directional. It's just like, even if there's not a bowl, incorporate some like bull corners. Um, like Highlands is a big clamming town, like maybe you can incorporate like a clam shell type thing somewhere. Um...
I don't wish you to have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta get a clam somewhere.
And maybe we can, yeah, maybe like there's a way to, to add some like clam artwork out there or something.
Yeah, that's a good, uh, clam idea.
Uh, Asher Foods, one two four Wesley, Atlantic Islands. Um, you could put clams in the concrete and that's getting your texture, clam shells. Um, but something, uh, going off of what the guys over here were saying about, um, kinda like the, the one north south, like wave skating. Um, I'm also looking at understanding like how you want people to enter the park. And right now you've, you know, totally blocked off both of those sides. Um, and maybe like, I don't know, keeping the one side closed to the parking lot, uh, open so people could like skate right in. And again, I'm not a skater, but, uh, with, with your H, is it possible that someone could like go up that ramp and then like throw in the air and down the other one?
Yeah, we need to...
So, so like you could, but it probably wouldn't be safe. Like if you had people like able to skate through, they could like traverse that over people like skating in. Probably not like, yeah, safe, but, uh, just my point is like how you want people to enter? Is that five foot like JIP space? Like is that how people are gonna come in and out of the park or?
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have that five foot like trap going around it. So that'll be your easiest way for any non-skaters to just kinda circumnavigate the park. Um, and, and that concept, like the, the idea is usually that we just maximize the space for skating as much as humanly possible. So you took a blanket, you know, this is the width, this is the length, can't, the configuration. But, um, yeah, we can definitely think about how, how the park is entered. A lot of times we try and avoid having any sort of direct option and be able to just roll into it. Um, cause a lot of times people are coming in and out, they're not thinking, not paying attention to what's happening. Um, also people that are not, that don't skate, don't understand how skate park work, or walking in and on their phone, next thing they know, the board comes flying out of their head. Um, so we try to almost think that the entrance is, is essentially an afterthought, so it makes it a little bit more complicated to get into where the action is. And that's mostly a function of safety, but it's definitely, there's definitely creative ways to, to do it. There's some things we could think about.
Could you imagine, would you see one three four Westway, Atlantic Highlands? Um, I don't skate here and also I'm not a architect. But just any of that five foot zone, like could that be a place where you sort of like, um, I don't know, like force people to like stand and like chill and stuff? Like, and it doesn't have to be, it just has to be not skateable, right?
Yeah, exactly.
But like, I don't know, if it's like, um, one of those like playground like safety services, like the rubberized mats? And that's even just like jet mounted up so people could like, who aren't skating at all, and they could like sit and chill on a mound and stuff? Like, I don't know, just making a design plot?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm a big fan of that. There's a, there's always, um, when we work in, like, so one of the JIP regulations, you have to have a fence around the park, right? Um, there's no getting around that. When we work with communities where there's fences required, we'll actually come in and take all the extra dirt that we're generating from, instead of exoring it, we'll pile it up in the mounds and seat it. And it becomes like these kinda grass blocks that people can hang and watch if they skate on and stuff. There's a ton of value to be able to add, like what you can do around the park. Um, it's just a matter of how much, how much space we have to work with.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think, I think there's things we could probably do. She's so cute though. Um, yeah, there's, there's some, I think there's a few things we can do, um, to kinda make those, those spaces, like activate those spaces and we can try like the perspective, you know, visual perspective, be able to watch, watch what's happening.
Oh, very good.
Uh, Timmy Burns, twenty fifth Street in Highlands. Uh, just to go back to the coping a little bit, I don't know what it is with the one at Long Branch, but like I always am getting caught on it compared to the coping in Keyport. And I don't know if it's just like, you know, this is a newer park or something like that. But like the coping at Keyport, like flies, like it goes. And whatever, yeah, and I have rails on my board too. And like for some reason, I'm like, I always find myself adding like wax to the quarter pipe of Long Branch. And everyone, it's just the salt there, I guess, is that what it is? Yeah, I'm always just getting super caught, yeah, maybe that's what it is. Yeah, I don't know if it was different material or, or something, but, uh, yeah, I must, that must be what it is. Cause yeah, Keyport one, like flies. Yeah, okay, gotcha. Yeah, I'm always putting wax on, cause I needed to rip, so. All right, cool.
Uh, Austin Manny, uh, one last red islands. Would, uh, lights be an option at all, around the park? Just like until like, look at night, like tonight, time of month, so like nine PM, you know, something along the lines of like that. That would be awesome, cause the nearest parking lights is an hour away, like cheering the city. For Tom River, yeah, yeah, the mean ones. Yeah, okay, all right, so.
Um, so lights are not my department? That would be something to go to, go to the city on? Um, but yeah, they're not a part of this budget. My, my guess would be probably not, just based on how close the neighbors are.
Right.
Um, yeah, I mean, you can get pretty detailed with their dial in the way, or they can really focus on the most specific areas. There's still gonna be a lot of anxiety and how close all the houses are, so I think it would be probably a tough sell in my opinion.
Right. And then one more thing, like the perimeter, grass, mostly grass. Could it possibly be stones when you're walking around it? Could possibly go up onto the park, you know, muddy and whatnot? Cause like floods are out there crazy.
Yeah, I mean, we could look at doing, um, some of the ones we've done are like, we've done river rocks or cobble and just like put cobble, cause we don't want anything too small. It's kinda like that moving and become like a real stopper.
Right.
Um, so we could, we've done stuff where we sunk, we sunk cobble in the concrete, we had it big enough where it's just been able to be left there. Um, but that's some, that's something we can, that's a look at, it'll help turn, help with drainage.
The lights would have to be addressed through rural ordinance, just folks. Does anyone else have anything they wanna add? Sam, you've been awfully quiet.
Um, as far as a plaza goes, do, I mean, we, I know we kinda talked about it, we kinda split everything in half, um, fifty percent street, fifty percent transition. Um, is there a desired height for a plaza? Or even do you guys wanna see an elevated plaza with stairs similar to what's in Long Branch?
Keyport's got stairs, Long Branch has stairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, elevation change pretty cool, like bits of gravel, something. Yeah. By the time you get, by the time we open this bit, to have, you know, hang out same look area or approach, you would set a stair, you might gobble up a bunch of, yeah, space up top. Change the elevation and go with, break, just escape those circles and things.
Any other, any other just like must have staple you wanna see, you wanna see this in the park?
Uh, my name is Timothy Brooks, uh, two seventy six Atlantic Islands. Um, one thing that you did touch upon before with having like a flow and also if there was a bowl type option in the park. Um, I really like the idea of having it be able to flow into the bowl and come out of it as you choose. Um, one thing with the few skate parks around here is that I've seen an issue with is flow. And it tends to have people like crowding around in a certain space. And I believe we should utilize more of the area that we have instead of having a space like too many people hanging out in one space. We should utilize it more for skating obstacles, like, okay, you're coming here to skate. This is the obstacle, this is the area for it, so.
Yeah, I like that point. Anything else?
Just a solid Manny, yeah. I saw that in the original sign up. Yeah, that's just me though.
Yeah, no, like some of the staples like Manny flat bar, like, yeah, just don't, don't do that for sure. Um, all right, well then I'm gonna ask, wanna pass this around? And we just get everyone to try and write, my handwriting is terrible, so no, no challenges, but try and write as, as many as possible so I can make sure that we, uh, we notify you guys for the webinar.
See now?
Yep, just see how it work.
Jason, are, are you through with your part?
Yes.
Okay. Then, yes, well done, you, well done. Um, I'd like to take this time to open up the, uh, for public portion. If anyone in the group has any questions for us?
How's the, like, for funding? Is there enough money in the budget?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just go off and figure that out here?
Or, oh, thank you so much.
Hi, Samantha McCarthy, fifty seven Marbury Avenue, Highlands. I was just, uh, I had a question about funding. If all the grant money is gonna cover the property, or you need to do some fundraising?
No, what we did is, well, I mean, we could always fundraise on top of this, but we have a, um, a hybrid grant where twenty-five percent of it is a grant. The other seventy-five percent is a low interest loan. And we also have, uh, another open space grant out there that we're just waiting to hear back from. That's a reimbursable grant where we put into, yeah, you guys know that, I was just making... Yep.
And then fundraising wise, um, would that help pay off the loan?
Absolutely.
I think the town would do like a five oh one, C four, C three.
There's a number of C threes that are already active in town that might have tapped them to help us out.
And with that resolution we passed at the same time, which allows for donations to come through, where's?
We've, uh, we've made a dedicated account, a trust account. That if anybody wants to, uh, fund it, you just write your check. And then in the memo, you say skate park, and it goes directly into the skate park account.
Okay.
So it would more so be to make some noise about that account. And that way, if you have corporate sponsors or folks that you know that have, you know, an extra couple hundred thousand dollars in their pocket, they could, uh, help the town out that way.
And when I did research years ago, um, corporations, like I know it was tough with corporations giving money to the green acres, grants and stuff. Um, so I don't know if things have changed with that. Cause they would want their name on the skate park if it's a big corporation giving a big check.
Right, right. Um, I don't know about naming it, they'd have to give us a lot of money for us to name a, the park after them. Uh, but like I said, there's, we're not gonna turn away any idea. So if you get somebody that wants to talk to us, definitely we'll have a conversation.
And then talk about, uh, like the ideas I had in the past.
Yep.
For fundraising at Open Space.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining Open Space.
Yes, thank you for joining Open Space.
Anyone else have any comments for us? Okay, then I'll close couple of questions.
Oops, sorry.
Close, close. Double floor. It's on you, it's on you.
Just wanna say thanks to everybody who turned out tonight. This has been a tremendous vibe tonight coming from everybody with all this positive feedback. Really great to know the design is open for this type of feedback. Looking forward to seeing that interactive session, but you know, I, I can't imagine Michelle's notes that are gonna come out of this, because it's gonna have a million of these terms that...
It's another language?
But i- i- in general, thi- this is how this is gonna work. Where, where folks who actually, you know, are gonna use this, that are gonna appreciate this, are gonna give us that feedback that's gonna make this a success for everybody. So thanks again.
I have, I have enjoyed hearing lately as much as the, the positiveness and the willingness to listen and to do is fabulous, thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone, and, um, Jason will be, then we'll get him in touch.
If I can just come up with a question for you guys?
Uh, well, I closed it, but I can open it again, but go ahead.
It was just giving us the car show and the thing, brilliant.
Um, are the cars gonna be the same hours of operation that the previous one was? We can take a look at it.
Okay. So if all this stuff is up for discussion?
Discussion, absolutely.
Okay, thank you guys.
Okay, and with that?
What's your answer?
All right, well, second?
Uh, Owen Favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.